And Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Okay, we're down to the bare minimum.
One more.
Our first item of business is to approve the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion passes. The City Council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending or potential litigation with legal counsel pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110. Aye, one aye for approximately 60 minutes. The council is not expected to take final action after this executive session. If an extension is required. Well, there we go.
Good evening, council. My name is Zach Hoover and I work in your Parks and Recreation Department. Today I bring to you Agenda Bill 5571 for your consideration of a pilot project for short-term commuter parking. The project purpose today is to introduce an option for short-term paid parking utilizing a fee-based parking application. Staff proposed that the paid parking is limited to Monday through Friday during normal business hours as availability of commuter parking is a concern on the island. The goal is to assess this technology until construction begins on the proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project at the BP Arco property formerly known as the Tully site. This highlights the City Council and community identified priorities such as access to transit and parking. Under this Agenda Bill today, the potential properties that I will be talking about are BP Arco property and the Sunset Highway Southeast, which is on the east end of the cul-de-sac on Sunset Highway. A little background for everyone, so as we know, the existing park and ride on Mercer Island gets full by 7:00 a.m., mostly on weekdays. We also have the North Mercer and the Town Center permit parking zones and restrictions specifically on the north end of the island. The city commissioned two parking studies, one in 2008 for the Town Center on-street parking study, and then again in 2015 for the park and ride survey. The image to the right on the screen there is our current North Mercer and Town Center restricted parking. It's also Exhibit 1 in your packet. And I just wanted to highlight the different options that Town Center Parking kind of the overview. It ranges from restricted parking, no parking, hour limit-based, and then also the North Mercer permit parking zone and the Town Center permit parking. Just for your knowledge, if you don't know already, in the last year, 712 permits were issued for the Town Center permit parking. So residents are utilizing that option. I do want to talk about the Mercer Island boat launch. It was included in your Agenda Bill. I will highlight why I included that later in the presentation, but for this pilot project, the two potential properties are again the BP Arco site and the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac. So in the image here, you'll notice that the BP Arco site currently has no restrictions on parking on that property. The vacant property is privately owned. However, the city has access to the site except for the building while in the due diligence process. On most weekdays, users are parking on-site and most stalls are usually taken by 9:00 a.m. And it has, in the current configuration, 18 stalls. The Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, again on the east end of Sunset Highway, directly adjacent to the BP Arco site. The current designation is time-limited parking per the city code, and it's four-hour restricted, free of charge right now. And that roughly fits about 10 cars. This is just a street view again of the BP Arco formerly known as the Tully's property. Again, 18 parking stalls and is the future site of the commuter parking and mixed-use development project. You'll notice that just this image that was taken, the parking lines are faded away. So I'll talk about some of the one-time costs associated with this pilot later in the presentation. And again, the Sunset Highway Southeast cul-de-sac, it fits roughly 10 cars depending on how people are parking in that roundabout street end, and it's currently designated as free four-hour time-limited parking. The Mercer Island Police Department is currently enforcing the city street and right-of-way, so they are enforcing this four-hour time-limit parking currently. So the project approach is...
Sorry, Zach.
Yeah?
That's what I'd like to ask question.
Go ahead.
Zach, with respect to the Tully site, the 18 stalls, is there any control right now or who's using them? Is it just anybody who parks there or obviously nobody's paying anybody? Is that the way it's operating right now?
Yes, from my understanding, there's no current restrictions, and so people are parking there at will.
And unlawfully, I mean, it is private property, but people are naturally just using it. And of course, the property owners aren't enforcing it, yeah.
So the project approach is basically to utilize approximately one-year pilot study for these two potential locations. I want to highlight that City Council approved $72,000 out of the Sound Transit settlement agreement back in December of 2018. This was for funding authorized the Sound Transit to lease 30 parking spaces in Town Center. Unfortunately, they weren't able to do so. So the funds that we're talking about today would need to be approved for this pilot if it were to be moved forward on your consent. Sound Transit is moving to a hybrid reserve paid parking for Mercer Island Park and Ride. They are planning on implementation in fall of this year, and they are tentatively scheduled to come and talk to you about that program in July. So the company that I have been researching and other cities along the I-5 corridor have utilized is the Pay by Phone. It's a company based out of Vancouver, B.C. And basically what it is in a nutshell is an application and company where you can download the app on any iOS device, any Android, BlackBerry, or any web-enabled device, so any device that has a browser you can access and pay parking. Pay for parking. For users without a smartphone, there is an option to call in. You would receive a voice prompts that kind of guide you along, so that is an option for users without a smartphone. Some of the features are extending parking through the app or on the call. So let's say a citizen parks at one of these lots, they pay for parking and they're running late at their doctor appointment. They would receive a notification if they enable it. So 15 minutes prior to their desired time ending, then you can extend it through the app. And that's one of the features of it. They also have event parking. So in their product roadmap, basically what would happen is if an entity knows of parkers or of people coming to park at that lot, they would receive an email basically with a notification that reserves their spot. So that's something that this technology can do in the future. It probably would not be utilized for this pilot, though. You also have the ability to set the pricing structure, so the council would decide if this is something that you guys would like to do, whether it be flat rate, hourly permits, et cetera. Some of the friction points, again, some people wouldn't want to download an app to pay for parking. I get that. You can also have, you can go onto their website via browser and use guest mode. So they pay by phone and other companies that are using the paid parking applications, you know, they want you to register onto their service, but if you don't want to, you can use a guest mode and you can still pay for parking. You also have the ability to call in, so the Pay by Phone has 24-hour customer service to help people if they have questions or if they have questions about citations and whatnot. Just kind of want to highlight the image to your right here, the sign is an example that the City of Seattle uses. So I just, I tried utilizing the same type of copy and format. And basically, you have three options of utilizing this application. Number one, and the most highly utilized, is downloading the app. You would enter the numerical code that the council would decide on for these two sites or for any lot in the future. They would type it into their phone or through the browser. They'd enter their desired parking duration, and then they would enter their payment options, and then they would get a receipt through email. Number two, again, is that web-enabled device, so anything online, you can visit a website, you would do the same thing. And then the third option is the ability to call, like I had suggested. The first time people utilizing the call feature, they would be prompted and kind of get a tutorial of how to use it for the first time. After that, they call in the second time if they like the service and they come back the next day. It would take them directly to please enter your location code, and you'd be off and running. You can also extend parking through the voice prompt if you want to call in. These are just some street view sign examples. On the left there, this is what it may look like in the future. Basically, a sign located on a fixed post. People would be able to see the location code, the phone number to call, and also the customer service number. Some more examples. Quickly going to go through just the user interface, just so you can kind of see what it may look like. This is where you could continue as a guest unless you wanted to create an account. If you do create an account, you would be able to add different vehicles, different license plates, different family members. You can see different reports on how much you've used it, how much you've spent, et cetera. You'd type in the location number on the signage. You would enter the stall number if we wanted to do that, or the license plate. And then you'd get a confirmation page where it would basically say what location you're at, your vehicle and your license plate number, when it would expire, and how much your total cost is, and then you would enter in your payment options. Some of the case studies that I've researched, Seattle, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, cities up and down the I-5 corridor are utilizing this technology right now. Most of them are utilizing this technology in addition to fixed meters. For this pilot study, staff's recommendation is to not include a fixed meter at these sites. I'll highlight in the next few slides, but the capital cost for these fixed kiosk machines running the $10,000 to $14,000 range is what we were quoted at. And then also, there are some, I know Bellingham specifically is going to introduce an app-only parking project in the Fairhaven District up in Bellingham. The City of Seattle in 2018 had roughly about 30% of payments done through the app. Bellingham launched in 2017, and it's rising up to about that 30% rate currently. And then per Pay by Phone, they have about 20 million registered users across the United States and eight other countries. As well as, you know, when adoption grows, people who have created an account outside of Mercer Island or if Mercer Island residents create the account on Mercer Island and go to other cities, it's the same interface and they can utilize the same features. Just parking technology in general, like I mentioned, that metered parking equipment is being phased out for capital costs, maintenance and collection, periodic interruptions and limited reporting capabilities. So I bring up the boat launch earlier in the presentation, and it's possible that if initiated, if we went forward with this pilot project, that this technology could be utilized for Town Center permit parking instead of the staff-driven manual process that it is now. For the boat launch, we do have a fixed machine at the boat launch, and we do see periodic interruptions. It's a nuisance for people wanting to pay and park and not knowing if they're going to get a citation, as well as for our police department enforcing that lot. Some of the things that I would be excited about is the data collection. I think this would be a huge boost so that we know what's going on in the North Town Center lot, specifically correlated right with the light rail station. We could get data on occupancy, time of day, when the peak hours are, the revenue collected, total parked vehicles, et cetera. Staff would be able to log in at any time and get these reports on the Pay by Phone application. So I do want to talk briefly about the enforcement aspect of this. At this time, we would have to come back if this is something that council wanted to initiate and talk further about the enforcement, but I did want to highlight it briefly. So scenario one, due to the public and private ownership of these two potential lots that we're talking about today with the BP Arco lot currently under private ownership, Mercer Island Police Department would not be able to enforce that. So a third party could come in and enforce that for the time being. The Mercer Island Police Department would enforce the Sunset Highway Southeast, the cul-de-sac, like they currently do.
Right now, that's not the case. The character and nature of this property is such that the city will be prevented from doing so.
So again, under scenario two, if, if and when the city does acquire that, that lot, that's when MIPD would be able to enforce. The Pay by Phone technology does include a payment verification portal, so any enforcement officer would be able to access that data on a web-enabled device, and they would utilize that information to, to issue citations. So let's talk about costs. I have three tables here. On the top, we have the one-time costs. It is staff's recommendation that we would re-stripe the, the BP ARCO lot before this pilot project would be initiated. There is signage and labor to install those signs, dependent on how many signs we would include and how many different location codes were, where we would want them. The technology setup fee for Pay by Phone, you'd pay a $500 flat fee to basically get the city of Mercer Island going. After that, it's $250 to add locations after the initial deployment. So, and then I want to talk about the second table here is the per transaction. So this is kind of where Pay by Phone gets their revenue cut. They have two options, basically, option one being that the consumer pays a 25-cent fee on every transaction. It's added to the price of parking, whether that be flat or hourly. Option two, which has a significantly higher uptake per Pay by Phone, would basically the city or the parking operator would embed that 20-cent cost per transaction, so it'd be taken out of the cost and not issued to the, issued to the consumer. And then the ongoing costs, you'll see there's a monthly minimum at $250 with an asterisk. Basically, that monthly minimum only applies when the transaction fees per calendar month don't equal $250. So the city, if the transaction fees don't equal that on a per-month basis, the city would pay the difference. I, I do talk about this because in November, in December of this year, the MIYFS Foundation does their tree lot, so the BP ARCO site would be out of order or out of commission for that timeframe. But the Sunset Highway would, if initiated, would be still going. So recommended parking rates, this is from a third-party estimate and kind of some market analysis based off Seattle and some east side cities for these two sites would be the following table. Again, this is not set in stone and would be set by council.
Does all day mean 24 hours or?
For this instance, yes, but you, you can have, the council can set whatever the table and whatever the, whatever the requirements are. It would be the council's decision. So this is, again, this is just a recommendation, so it could be 24 hours or it could be a time limit. So what are we looking at for estimated costs to initiate the pilot project for approximately about a year? In one-time costs, you're looking at $4,000 to $5,000 for the initial deployment. The ongoing cost of the $250 a month if we don't hit that transaction fees. Staff projects that revenues collected could fully pay or recoup the one-time setup costs after a couple months of initiating the pilot project. And it would also offset the rental fee that the city currently pays for the BP ARCO property. So next steps, if council is interested in pursuing this project, we would come back and amend the municipal code for paid parking. Number two, we'd confirm the enforcement strategy, which is like we talked about, dependent on property ownership. Council would determine the rate structure and kind of the format that you guys would like to see for parking fees. And then appropriate the funds for the pilot project. Again, the $72,000 was approved. And again, the $4,000 to $5,000 in estimated one-time costs for approximately a year. This is a timeline that we would have for you. We would return to council, July, August, sign a contract with the parking technology provider. We would then have outreach and communication, so the chamber, business owners and residents would have a communication outreach. We would initiate it in September, late September 2019. We would suspend it for the, the tree lot, and then we would close out the pilot project in fall, winter of 2020. If you guys have any questions.
So I've been making several trips to Olympia this year, and what I just, and in the past, when I've made trips to Olympia, I've found the parking there's been very difficult to find and a real hassle to pay for because you never know quite how long a hearing is going to go, and you end up stressing out about whether you've paid for enough parking or not. This year, I discovered Pay by Phone parking and a big stretch of it. It's a fair walk from the Capitol, but I found it to be incredibly easy to use and super low stress because if anything was going long, you just got a little note on your phone coming in saying your parking's about to run out, and with a couple clicks, you could extend your parking as long as you wanted to extend it. So I came to really appreciate this in that circumstance and am a big proponent for us giving it a try here. I think it, it represents both a, a way to better utilize that property that we, you know, we've got the agreement developing on, but also to figure out how this works for our town and whether it then makes sense for us to extend it further in the future. So it becomes a nice pilot in both respects. So I'm supportive of going forward with this, and I appreciate Zach putting all the work into this that's been done.
I certainly am in favor of generating some revenue from property that is currently being used by others without paying for parking. So just a couple of basic questions, and then regarding the number of stalls, is 18 the maximum on that piece of property? And is 10 the maximum that you can have on the, you know, the cul-de-sac? That's kind of pretty basic questions. And then I really am puzzled by the pay options one versus two. And I understand number one is paid by the consumer, number two is paid by the city, but I'm not sure, you know, I understand the rationale that was given, that option two, you have greater usage. I'm, I'm not necessarily convinced that that really applies when you're only dealing with 28 stalls. And I guess I'm also wondering, given the city's financial issues, why the city would consider that as opposed to passing that on to, to the consumer? So if you can just answer some of those questions and maybe respond to those two options.
Yeah, so for the current configuration on the BP ARCO lot, it is 18 stalls. The, the estimate for re-striping it includes that same configuration. I, I'm not aware of if that's the maximum amount of stalls on that lot. We can come back and get that for you. On the Sunset Highway Southeast, there is currently no parking, or there's no painting stripes on there. So it is, I drove by there today, just kind of do last-minute research and, you know...
Reconnaissance.
Yeah, right. And so, you know, depending on how people park, there could be a huge space and they take up, you know, two or three spots. So that's why I said roughly 10. Today, there was 11. And then also for, for the option one, I think you bring up a good point. Most of these cities who have Pay by Phone utilize this in multiple lots and multiple stalls numbering in the hundreds or, you know, more than that. For 28 spots, it certainly is a valid point to bring up, whether it makes sense to have option one or versus option two.
So I'll just add that you don't have to go to Olympia to test this out. I use it in Seattle all the time, and it works really well, and I love the reminders when I'm running late or things are running wrong. So thank you for the research, thank you for the presentation. It, it sounds like a really good thing to sort of pilot and see and try to recoup some earnings on some property we're paying rent on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Zach, thanks for putting that presentation together. Obviously, it was very thorough because we're not debating amongst ourselves what is missing here.
It's a good idea.
Kudos for you, right?
It's a good idea.
Yeah, we're 30, 30 minutes ahead of schedule here. The only thing I would ask is, I'm a, I use the boat launch, and I, I know that that machine has had challenges. What would you say is the downtime on that thing? Like, how, how frequently is it not operable?
It's pretty much every Saturday during the summer. At the peak use, the thing goes down. No, I'm joking, but it did just go down this weekend again. It's probably down a couple days a month.
Yeah, and so it's $11 per instance, per spot. And so the ROI on fixing that is huge.
There is an annual pass option, so if you do pay $70, you get an annual pass, but yeah, correct.
So why are you not suggesting this pilot be extended to the boat launch as well?
It's up to council. Whether it be extended to the boat launch, I think for this pilot study, it would make sense to, to see how we do in the two potential sites there. I don't know if I am privy to the information. I know that there's a sublease agreement with Washdaw and Sound Transit for the boat launch that maybe Jesse can talk about.
I, I honestly think we're there at the boat launch, that this needs to follow. We thought we'd start here and, and phase it in. The, the machine is costing us a lot of money. This isn't automatic efficiency. I also want to go back, Zach made a comment earlier that we issue parking permits here, and Pay by Phone has the technology and capability to do permits. So it's another opportunity to, to take that function out of a manual process and automate it. So, and then more, it does even, has even more capabilities like event parking and things like that. So I, I would imagine we'd be looking at some, some really quick phases as this get rolled, gets rolled out.
Yeah, and so my thought on that is that I would, I would support the boat launch being wrapped in. I buy that permit every year, and it's an inconvenience to go down to the community center and go to the desk and do it. I'm sure that this technology would just say, hey, do you want to, do you want to do this again, right? Renew your, your permit. And I would hope that the, well, so I would ask Ed, have you looked at the enforcement tools? Like, how do you use this app and then drive through the boat launch and figure out who paid and who didn't?
So I can talk briefly about the, the payment verification. I don't, I don't think that Ed or the police have looked at the backend, but this is how Pay by Phone, other cities are using, either the municipal police department or a hybrid approach. So it is, it is working. We can schedule a demo and see how that would work for, for the police.
Deputy Mayor, if I can add, I was just telling Zach this and Jesse, I just did Pay by Phone at the city of Kirkland, and I got a citation. I paid, I swear to God, I paid. However, I just got a new vehicle, and I had initially registered my vehicle under the temporary license, you know, and I hadn't gone back to upload the permanent license plate number. And so I think, you know, that's my dispute. Let me just say that's going to be my dispute with them. But yeah, I, I received a ticket on my windshield. It was $50. I mean, it's, I was like, wow, that's a lot of money when I paid $5 to park. And so, you know, I'm imagining that's how we would see it working with our PD.
And so I would just say, right now, the machine gives you a little receipt, and you put that in the dash. And then if you buy a permit, you put that on the dash. And so I think enforcement right now, police can drive through and they can just look for these things. How do you do that with an app like this?
So with the payment verification, the, the officer would be able to access live data on different license plates, so it's all license plate-driven, unless you wanted to do a stall number. So you can see, you can drive by and you can see license plate A, B, C, 1, 2, 3. You can see that they still have time remaining, so you'd move on to the next car. If that vehicle license plate has expired time, that's when the citation would be issued.
So uploaded to my registration of Pay by Phone, a photo of my vehicle as well. So you can also have an extra measure of, hey, this is, the car's registered under my account.
So, boy, I just had like lots of real questions about privacy concerns and public records and stuff like that, but maybe we can delve into that another time. Zach, the question I have for you is kind of philosophically, how do you distinguish between this paid parking and say the, you know, the blue dotted line on the map that is town center permit parking? Because the pricing is going to be dramatically different.
Right, so again, this is just a pilot proposal for, for council. Again, this is just what I had researched. It is up to the council decision on, on what this may look like in the future. Staff have thought about, you know, for light rail coming, it may be a good opportunity for council to, to utilize what we have available right now to kind of figure out the technology in advance for, for light rail coming.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other questions?
You're, I'm just wondering, I mean, you're suggesting wrap the boat launch in. Are we wanting to try and see whether the will of the council is on that?
I think that's what we need to do, is figure out. Well, Zach, maybe you can tell us how granular you want to get with this.
Yeah, so for, to deploy the application, it's no, it's no hassle to add different lots. Like I said, you, you tell Pay by Phone, this is the lots that we want to utilize in the first initial deployment. So if we wanted to utilize the boat launch, we can add that in to the, to setup fee. So it really, there's no hassle on, on the backend trying to set that up with Pay by Phone, with their contract and whatnot. The signage would be a factor in this. The boat launch obviously has 60 stalls compared to the 28 that the Sunset Highway and BP ARCO lot have. So we'd have to determine where those signs go, if we would have to, you know, install any fixed posts, or if we attach them to freestanding posts there already. So that's just one, one concern.
So if we're going to talk about the boat launch, what about in the months? We don't have a lot of traffic there. Is the $250 monthly fee for all of the city's locations, or is it per lot?
It is per, I believe it's per lot.
So that's a factor given volume.
I, I get it, and what I would say, probably somebody will corroborate this, but that machine being down, you know, two days a month at $11 a stall for all those stalls, it's going to pay for that.
All year long. Data would be good.
The machine breaks a lot. So, all right, so if we're going to land this, I like to start where it's simple. So what are we looking for support for? The boat launch, the cul-de-sac, the BP ARCO site? That's, that's basically the full menu, right?
That's correct. So we would come back to council, we would determine the enforcement strategies based off your decision. There would be, need to be an amendment to city code. We would sign the contract with the Pay by Phone application. We'd have to have community outreach and communication, and then we're looking at, yeah, an initial pilot project starting in September.
Okay. So why don't we just start with the full monte? Is, is there support for all of those options?
I'm, I'm supportive, but obviously Zach is going to come back with a updated budget and, you know...
Right.
So we can at least decide.
Okay. Why not? Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be great if we could get it in place while the boat launch was still launching boats.
Well, I, I think the timeline's subject to however quick, how quickly you can implement it, right? And maybe this will modify itself.
Right.
I, I would like to see the boat launch accelerated, especially for summer. I'll leave that up to you.
I'll just add, it's sort of embedded in all of this, but we will need to wrestle with not just cost of parking, but duration of parking for particularly the cul-de-sac and the Tully's lot. The cul-de-sac, before, I think most of you are on the council, we, we wrestled with turning it into that four-hour parking that was intentionally set at that level so that it wasn't all-day commuter parking, it was part day, I need to go into the city parking and need a place to park. So it was an intent in, in making it four-hour parking, and we'll either need to just keep that or think about modifying that as we, as we adopt this. So, and, and I don't know with the Tully's, but I guess we'd be looking for staff recommendation there too, as to how many hours you would, you would limit it to.
Very good.
Thank you, council.
That gets you what you need, Zach?
It does. Thank you, council.
Very good. We're going to take a 15-minute break. Welcome to...
Spanisharoo.
Yeah. You've got to get used to that. Lucky it's got phone on. I assist them on that phone. Agenda Bill 5567, a proclamation for Pride Month. Welcome Assistant to the City Manager, Ally Speets.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Saleem Nice. My name is Ally Speets. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager, and I am here to talk about the city of Mercer Island's first-ever Pride Month proclamation. So Pride Month is in June, and it's a month to celebrate gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer, and asexual people, plus all other sexual orientations and genders. It is celebrated in June to commemorate the Stonewall riots, which kicked off the first major demonstrations for gay rights in America. On June 28, 1969, police raided the Stonewall Inn in New York City's Greenwich Village, but bar patrons, gay men and drag queens fought back. A spontaneous incident which is now marked as the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States. Excuse me. Today, gay pride features marches around the country, educational and awareness events, and parties to celebrate gay pride. Pride Month is also an opportunity to peacefully protest and raise political awareness of current issues facing the community. Pride Month is important because it marks the start of a huge change within the LGBTQ+ community, as well as the wider societal implications. Although attitudes and injustice still remain, much has changed since the riots of 1969, and by continuing this longstanding tradition, awareness is raised, the attitudes of society are improved, and inclusiveness is encouraged. Tonight, we have a group of students here from the QSA Club at Mercer Island High School. So I would like to invite them all to come forward. The names I have are Artemis Kim, Mash Batilov, Maggie Peterson, and Kate Peterson. You guys can come up behind me here. We also have with us this evening Jason Fussell. He manages the transfer agency functions of U.S. Retail Mutual Funds at Russell Investments. I have no idea what that actually means, but it sounds really important. But more importantly, Jason is a Mercer Island resident, and he is the Secretary of the Board for the Pride Foundation located here in Seattle. Jason, would you like to come forward? So whereas Mercer Island is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family, and whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgendered people are our family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers who contribute meaningfully to our community, and whereas gay pride events are held in June to commemorate the June 28, 1969 Stonewall riots that were sparked in response to ongoing police harassment of gay, New York's gay community, and were also the catalyst for establishing safe places for gays and lesbians to be open about their sexual orientation without fear of being arrested or jailed, and whereas the fight for dignity, equality, and inclusion for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people has been hard-fought in the streets and in the courts of this country, and whereas these fights for inclusion have made much progress towards changing the hearts and the minds of people in many parts of the world, and whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, Saleem Nice, Deputy Mayor of the city of Mercer Island, does hereby proclaim June 2019 as Pride Month in Mercer Island, Washington, to celebrate gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, queer, and asexual people, plus all other sexual orientations and genders who are members of our community, to recognize their contributions and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty. Approved this day, June 4, 2019.
We will. But Jason's got a few... Deputy Mayor, excuse me.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. It's an honor to take part in accepting the proclamation on behalf of the city of Mercer Island, its LGBT community, and also Pride Foundation, where I'm currently on my sixth year of the Board of Directors. Pride Foundation's mission is to build a better world, starting here in the Northwest, by supporting LGBTQ people and communities, funding education for LGBTQ and ally students, engaging leaders to build community strengthening strategies, and most importantly, advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion through advocacy, legislation, and public education. This proclamation celebrates pride and the Pride Foundation's credo, be who you are, where you are. The stories I hear and the programs I help support at the foundation remind me frequently of the importance of being who you are, where you are, living openly and genuinely and safely in all the places we call home, whether it's here on Mercer Island, or in cities like Seattle, or in rural communities across the Northwest. It's a truth that many take for granted, but all of us want, to simply live our lives within a community, and not to feel called out or left out because of the ways we are different. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you for continuing to make this a place that recognizes, elevates, and includes the LGBT community here on Mercer Island. Robert and I are grateful every day to make, for our decision to make Mercer Island our home, and for that reason, it is very meaningful and important to us that we share this day with all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Really quickly, I wanted to read about the QSA Club, which stands for the Queer Straight Alliance. It's a student-led club at Mercer Island High School. It's both a safe space for students of any gender or sexuality to come and hang out, and a place where students work to promote inclusivity at school. In the past few years, the QSA advocated to change graduation robe colors to all maroon, worked with the leadership class to change the homecoming royalty selection process to be more inclusive, led teacher training workshops, met with administration to discuss issues such as bathroom access for all students, and created library displays and posters to celebrate Pride Month. QSA works to create a culture where all students feel safe at MIHS. Thank you, guys.
I would just like to point out that we have Kathy Gentino.
Oh, yes.
Why don't you come speak into the mic? Thank you.
Kathy Gentino is sitting right over there, and Kathy is our QSA advisor at the high school. She comes to all our meetings and helps us a lot of things. She really does a great job promoting inclusivity at the high school, and she is retiring this year, and we are going to miss her so much. She has done so much for all of us. Thank you so much, Kathy.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, council. It's hard to follow that, but really pleased to see our Police Chief Ed Holmes and our Fire Chief Steve Heitman on the front cover of Mercer Island Living Magazine. And what was really special about this was their wanting to raise awareness for PTSD, especially for typically in our public safety departments and police and fire. So it was really neat to see them featured on the front cover and for them to really take a stand in combating PTSD. Hopefully, you've seen this around town, the new wayfinding signs. They provide a visual means of orienting visitors to major destinations of interest, including downtown, community facilities, trails, and parks. Back in April of 2017, the city held an open house. We received a lot of community input. I believe we even met with members of the chamber to really make this come to life. In addition, we received a grant match of 50% of the cost. What was really great about this grant, which I believe Councilmember Weickert highlighted to us, was a grant from the Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership. The 50% match could also be matched by in-kind, so we were able to really provide the labor costs as our 50% match. Gateway signs are located along the I-90 off-ramps. You can hopefully see them around town center, our community center, Luther Burbank, and City Hall. The signs were constructed using high-intensity production colors and surfaces that will typically provide up to 14 years before the signs will need to be replaced. I understand the signs that are out there, I got an email from Fred. He said, "I think those original signs were installed when he was on the council." Fred Jarrett. If I recall, that was a long time ago. So these songs, these signs were long overdue to be replaced, so it's really great to see them out there, and hopefully our residents have noticed that, and again, at very, very little cost to local taxpayers. Also want to highlight, the Mercer Island Gallery has its next artist reception this Thursday at 6:30. Come out and meet Jan Vinnie, Annel Hollingsworth, and Sean Marie Johnson, the three talented artists from the Puget Sound area. They are on view at the gallery. You can explore their photographs and other works of art while you enjoy live music and nibbles provided by the Mercer Island Arts Council. That exhibit will be on display through July 19. We have a few events for restoration, one coming up on Saturday, June 8, at 8:00 a.m., pardon me, 10:00 a.m. at Pioneer Park. Meet at the Southeast 68 Kiosk. Also, one on Saturday, June 15, at 10:00 a.m., Gallagher Hill, so meet here at City Hall. And then again, another one on the 15th, and that is taking place at Homestead Park. So you want to meet at the playground. Also, our senior summer luau is coming up on Thursday, June 13, at 12:00 p.m. at the Community Center. The cost is $5.50 per person. It includes lunch, games, music, and prizes. To reserve your spot, you will need to call 206-275-7689. And then on Friday, June 14, at 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., please join our Community Points of Distribution and Emergency Well Operations Training Group at Rotary Park. It's a great opportunity to learn how to assist your neighbors in a disaster. If you'd like more information, please contact Officer Jennifer Franklin at 206-275-7905. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item, or remarks will be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the council may be requested by the deputy mayor to leave the meeting. The council cannot accept comments on any campaign-related matters, elections for individual offices, or ballot propositions, except under specific circumstances where consideration of a ballot measure is on the council agenda pursuant to RCW 42.17A.555. When it's your turn to address the council, be sure to speak audibly into the podium microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comments? Mr. Marshall? We're going to reset your time there.
I'll be brief anyway. So we've recruited a wonderful rector, Elizabeth Riley, who you get to meet here...
Steve, you should begin again, because the folks who are watching on TV missed the beginning of your comments.
So I'm Steve Marshall. I live at 8150 West Mercer Way. I'm a member of the Emmanuel Episcopal Church since 1976 and lived on the island since that time, and I'm here on behalf of the church on a rector housing impact fee issue. We've recruited a wonderful rector of Elizabeth Riley, and we're ready to move in to new rector housing, which is one of the great reasons we were able to recruit this wonderful leader of the church. And the Emmanuel Episcopal Church protests the imposition of an impact fee on the rector housing. We seek a declaration or determination from the council and staff that the local impact fee ordinance does not apply to rector housing or any other religious housing on Mercer Island under the U.S. Constitution, federal law, state law specifically, and under the terms of the actual ordinance itself. I won't go into detail, because we brought, I brought some letters for each of you that kind of outline exactly the position that we have, but because we're moving in this month, we need a declaration or determination to get the occupancy permit. We're willing to move in with this unresolved, if we can move in and then preserve our rights to contest the imposition of the fee at a later point. And again, I think I mentioned when I was off the microphone that this would apply to any religious group on the island. And you have already an exemption for low-income housing under federal constitutional principles on the First Amendment.
I'll be brief, anyway. So we've recruited a wonderful rector, Elizabeth Riley, who you get to meet here.
Steve, you should begin again, because the folks who are watching on TV missed the beginning of your comments.
So I'm Steve Marshall. I live at 8150 West Mercer Way. I'm a member of the Emmanuel Episcopal Church since 1976 and lived on the island since that time. And I'm here on behalf of the church on a rector housing impact fee issue. We've recruited a wonderful rector, Elizabeth Riley, and we're ready to move in to new rector housing, which is one of the great reasons we were able to recruit this wonderful leader of the church. And the Emmanuel Episcopal Church protest the imposition of an impact fee on the rector housing. We seek a declaration or determination from the council and staff that the local impact fee ordinance does not apply to rector housing or any other religious housing on Mercer Island under the U.S. Constitution, federal law, state law specifically, and under the terms of the actual ordinance itself. I won't go into detail, because we brought, I brought some letters for each of you that kind of outline exactly the position that we have. But because we're moving in this month, we need a declaration or determination to get the occupancy permit. We're willing to move in with this unresolved, if we can move in and then preserve our rights to contest the imposition of the fee at a later point. And again, I think I mentioned when I was off the microphone that this would apply to any religious group on the island. And you have already an exemption for low-income housing. Under federal constitutional principles on the First Amendment and under the federal statutory law, the least impactful position on what happens with the housing that we're talking about is the path that you should take. And because there's already an exemption on low-income housing, this ought to be an exemption, too. It ought to be part and parcel of the overall ordinance. So I'm going to give copies to the clerk here to hand out, and we hope we can get a determination before people are moving in. So with that, I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Riley, and then I'll introduce our project manager, Alan Reed, who's been working on this project for some time. It's going to be great. And the Episcopal Church, rather than having an impact on the community in a negative way, has been having a positive impact. That's what we'd like to continue on. So thank you very much for listening. And with that, I ask Elizabeth Riley to come up and say just a couple of words.
Hello, council. I am the Reverend Elizabeth Riley. I'm a resident of Mercer Island and the rector of Emmanuel Episcopal Church. Steve can make all the legal arguments and make them well, and that is not my skill or qualification to speak to you about, except to speak about what we, as a congregation, mean on Mercer Island. At the heart of what any of the religious organizations here on the island do is serve the island and make a positive impact in what we do. And so I want to say thank you for considering this issue, to consider giving us the flexibility with the limited resources we do have to continue to make a positive impact on our community and to serve the community in unique and creative ways. Thank you.
So I'm Alan Reed. I have been the project manager on this build at Emmanuel Church, a member of Emmanuel Church. You've seen me here a number of times over the last five years related to this particular project. It seems like every time we turn around, we uncover yet another little piece of where we don't quite fit with the rules that we write as a community as they pertain to religious organizations. So we're just back again. This is, in many ways, no different from issues we've taken on related to stormwater retention or some issues that we faced relative to permitting. And we'll work with you. We'll figure it out. Appreciate your taking a look at this. Please call us anytime.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? If there are no, if, oh, we got one more. Very good.
Evening, deputy mayor, council members. My name is Donna Barnett, and I'm providing comments on behalf of the Citizens for Reasonable Shoreline Policies regarding AB 5577, Shoreline Master Program update. I'm actually standing in for my colleague, Ryan Thomas, who could not be here this evening due to a medical emergency with his family. So he gave me the background and provided me with these comments to share on behalf of the citizens, which I'll call CRSP, unless people have been referring to it as CRISP. Sorry for that. My comments align with the written comments that CRSP provided to the council last Friday by email. And CRSP appreciates the council's thoughtful engagement on the issue of the non-conforming dock provisions of the Shoreline Master Program. We're glad for the council's request that staff coordinate with ecology regarding the requested revision and prepare language for the council's review. But staff's proposal must be amended in two important ways. First, the proposal needs to actually accomplish the decoupling. As proposed by staff, the decking work would still require structural upgrades. It would require changing the height of the dock to be at least 1 1/2 feet above the ordinary high-water mark. But this change should be limited to when structural work is being initiated, not when volunteer decking upgrades are occurring. Similarly, engaging in structural work should not trigger decking upgrades. But under the proposal, a person modifying the structure of a dock would be required to replace the decking. Again, the provisions are not separated or decoupled as intended. Note that it's most important to the group that a resident wishing to engage in decking upgrades not be required to engage in structural work. So the converse is less important to CRISP. CRISP would not oppose an amendment that includes requiring decking work when structural threshold is met, so long as the decking work didn't trigger structural work, if that makes sense. Second, the proposal increases the requirement for decking light transmittance from 40% to 60%. We see no reason to modify the existing standard of 40%, which is consistent with other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions on the lake. To date, there have been no discussions about changing this standard. So in summary, CRSP asks that the council consider and adopt the amendments to staff's proposal. We're requesting good government, where citizens are properly encouraged to take environmentally beneficial actions. And many of our members want to upgrade their dock decking with transparent grading but are discouraged from doing so because of the implications of the existing non-conforming dock provision. So the language requested by our group was provided by email on Friday, and I have additional copies I'll provide today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Paul Goodrich. I reside at 8057 West Mercer Way, where I've lived for more than the last 25 years. When we originally purchased the lot that we built a house on, it had a relatively new dock on it that had been provided by the person that subdivided the property. Unfortunately for us, it was a good dock, has been a good dock for many years, but like any dock that's like 25 to 30 years old, it's showing its age, like some of us. So I just wanted to add to my comments. I also support the CRISP proposed amendment there. And I'm one of those people that would be discouraged from replacing my decking if I thought that I would also have to pull out approximately 26 pilings that support the dock and are in fine shape today. There's nothing wrong with them at all. So I am one of those people that support the CRISP amendment to the proposed staff language. I'd like to point out, very briefly, two suggestions on it. One, with respect to the surface area. I think just saying 50% leaves it still sufficiently ambiguous. I would like to see it say that 50% of materials are replaced, as opposed to just 50% of the area. With respect to the structural, there's no measure of what 50% of the structural is. When I started thinking about, well, what's structural and what's not structural? Well, pilings are obviously structural, and they're actually mentioned specifically in here. But there are other things. There are cross-bracings that's involved. There are the things that go into the structure of the thing. So I'm wondering, like, okay, if I get to a point where I need to replace something in the structure, how is, how is there going to be a standard that tells me what 50%, what constitutes 50%? So I don't have a great answer for it. I don't think there is a great answer. If there is, I'd love to hear it. But I think that probably the best one would be by volume. So that if you're replacing more than 50% by volume, that should trigger it. So for example, if the top six inches of my pilings were rotting out, and they haven't yet so far, so I'm glad about that. But if they were rotting out, should I, should that count, and I replace the top six inches of 15 of my 26 pilings? Would that mean that I'd have to replace all the pilings, even though I only had to replace six inches of each one? I don't think it should. There's nothing wrong with the rest of the piling on it. So I think that we ought to clarify this and be unambiguous about what we mean by 50%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. If there's no one else, appearances are now closed. The next item of business is the consent calendar. The consent calendar contains payables of $755,518.32 on 5/16/19, $764,002.93 on 5/23/19, and $543,371.90 on 5/30/19. Payroll of $857,739.43 on 5/24/19. Minutes, April 25 of 2019, special joint meeting, and May 21, 2019, regular meeting. AB 5576, adoption of six-year, 2020 through 2025, TIP. AB 5573, employee wellness program support. Is there a motion?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Regular business. We now move to regular business, and the first item is AB 5577. Critical areas, code, shoreline master program, CIPA and ancillary amendments, second reading and adoption. Welcome, senior planner, Robin Probsting.
Excellent. Thank you, council members. I'm Robin Probsting, one of your senior planners. Tonight, I'm following up on the critical areas ordinance and shoreline master program update, which we last discussed at your May 21st meeting. At that meeting, we reviewed the state legislative framework, which sets the parameters for these codes, including, for example, the requirement to have critical areas codes based on science. Also at that meeting, staff took council member comments on the draft code and have incorporated those into the final code language. Most items were clarifying in nature or fixed typos that were in the draft. There was one substantive change, which had to do with the changing of dock dimensions when repair is proposed. But before we start that discussion, were there any questions I could answer about the critical areas code or anything I can do to be helpful? Is there not? Okay.
You're lucky.
Very good. Well, so in that case, I'll actually hand things over to Evan to discuss how to move forward on those changes to the SMP.
Good evening, deputy mayor, city council. I'm Evan Maxim, your community planning and development director. As you can tell, Robin did her job correctly, and the critical areas ordinance was perfect, and the SMP, which was my part of the responsibilities, is not quite right. What I understood from the city council's direction on May 21st is that the council directed us to explore essentially two flavors of the decoupling that was requested in the Perkins Coie letter that was transmitted to the city council prior to the May 21st meeting. The first version of that was, and I should back up and provide a little bit of context as I explain this. Currently, your shoreline master program requires that when a certain amount of repair is done on a residential dock, the dock is brought more into compliance with today's standards for dock design. When I say more into compliance, that typically takes the form of three types of changes to that dock design. The first is to increase the open space, if you will, on the dock surfacing, the decking on the top of the dock, to allow light to transmit through the dock to the lake bed below. That's currently set at a 40% threshold. I can explain why I had originally suggested 60% in your agenda vote. The second requirement under the current regulation is that the dock width within the first 30 feet from the lake edge extending out into the lake be narrowed from whatever the existing dock width is currently down to either four feet or five feet, depending on the specifics of the site. And the third requirement is that the dock, if it's not already located a foot and a half above the surface level of the lake, be relocated up to a foot and a half of clearance. That's your current standard. Those three improvements, if you will, to the dock, or those three changes to the design of the dock, are triggered when the repair crosses one of two thresholds: replacing more than 50% of the dock surfacing, the decking, within a five-year period, or replacing more than 50% of the dock's structural components within a five-year period. The Perkins Coie letter had a number of requests in it that I think the council discussed at your May 21st meeting. I took the council direction at that time to look into two of those requests, and it's possible, of course, I misunderstood the direction. The first was to look at decoupling the repair of the dock's surface from the narrowing standard, the requirement to narrow the dock to four feet within that first 30 feet from the lake edge. The second was to look at decoupling that structural threshold from the requirement to narrow the dock within that first 30 feet, which is what I tried to capture in your exhibit for and what I talked through initially with the Department of Ecology following your direction on May 21st. The feedback that we received from the Department of Ecology, I would characterize as initial feedback at this point. It's based on a set of phone calls and emails that I exchanged with the Department of Ecology shoreline planner. And what I was trying to gauge there is, the Department of Ecology is essentially their tolerance to changes to our scope on the shoreline master program update. Recall that originally, the shoreline master program update was scoped as a update to just address either regulatory or case law changes that occurred between your original SMP being adopted in 2015 and today. It was not scoped to pick up other, what I might characterize as substantive changes to your current standards. This is technically a substantive change, which is part of the basis for why Ecology has given us the answer they've given, and I'll get to that in a moment. But it's a relatively minor substantive change. So that's the context of the feedback from Ecology. What I've understood from the Department of Ecology to date is that they really view the three improvements or changes to the dock design to be intended to reduce the degree of shading on the lake bed. So again, recall, these three changes are narrowing the dock in that first 30 feet, the light transmittance through the dock surface, and then the height of the dock above the lake level. I apologize. I jumped a bullet. Their initial feedback was that the current standard appears to be working as originally intended in the SMP that you adopted in 2015, but that perhaps it doesn't make sense for the city of Mercer Island from a community standpoint. And there is some tolerance, I'm reading between the lines, Ecology has not committed to this, to decoupling the replacement of the decking from the narrowing requirement. They were much more skeptical, I'll say, around decoupling that narrowing of the dock from the structural replacement. And recall, when you're thinking about this, decking, changing the decking surfacing is a relatively, relatively, less expensive exercise than changing structural components on the dock. And that, I think, is going into the Department of Ecology's thinking. They did indicate that preparation of a cumulative impact analysis addendum, or a CIA addendum, would be required for any change to the substantive standards. So cumulative impact analysis, what this is intended to do is demonstrate that the city of Mercer Island's shoreline master program will achieve no net loss in ecological function of the lake shore environment with its regulations around docks, bulkheads, piers, moorage, things of that nature. City of Mercer Island prepared one in 2012 when you prepared your first shoreline master program. What we're looking at here with our consultant is a limited scope addendum, and it's limited to just the specific set of standards in terms of their analysis. But the question that we're trying to prove out to the Department of Ecology is that the net ecological effect of all of the shoreline master program provisions will not result in that net, a negative impact. So they look, they being the Department of Ecology, look at all of these regulations, part and parcel. I mention this because you've heard testimony, you've seen in your public comments in comparison to some of our peer jurisdictions. I think Medina was one, perhaps Kirkland or others were also on that mix. That kind of peer jurisdiction comparison in isolation will not address the Department of Ecology standard for review. They look at the, all of the shoreline master program protections in total when evaluating the cumulative impact, meaning that in order for us to do an apples-to-apples comparison with the city of Medina or Kirkland or Renton or any of our peer jurisdictions, we would be looking at not just the threshold for requiring dock repairs, but we would also be looking at their protection standards around shoreline, hardening, bulkheads, shoreline improvement. improvements, residential construction, things of that nature. I mention all of this because, at the moment, we're in the process of exploring this with the Department of Ecology. I don't have hard and fast information I can give you. I'm giving you a sense of where I think they will be willing to accommodate the city. So far, they've agreed, theoretically at least, that if we can prove out that the decoupling of the change to the decking from the narrowing of the dock, they're comfortable with that kind of change. Going beyond that, I think we begin to run the risk of either extending our shoreline master program review or potentially kicking into another public hearing with the Department of Ecology, which so far, we've avoided. Any questions around the cumulative impact analysis and kind of the conversation with the Department of Ecology at the moment?
So, I, I... I just want, I'm trying to clarify things you said. So what I've heard is that the decking element is of less concern to DOE than the structural portion. Are you then saying that the CIA addendum applies to one and not the other, or that it applies?
It applies to both.
I'm trying to sort of play down, or walk down these paths to understand them.
Pardon me, councilmember, I did not mean to interrupt. The, what I'm looking for, perhaps in terms of thumbs up from the city council tonight, is I think I've heard effectively two or three ideas floated in front of the council as to what the standard would eventually look like. Any of these, your city staff can draft for you and run through the process. But all of them will require that we have our consultant evaluate the net ecological effect through this cumulative impact analysis, and will need to be supported by that CIA document. The more changes we make to the substance of our shoreline master program, I think the greater our risk is that either the cumulative impact assessment will not support the change, or the Department of Ecology will find that this is a substantive change to the shoreline master program and essentially ship us into a different set of process and approval. With a relatively modest change, I think it's relatively unlikely. The more changes we look at, the more complicated.
Evan, and the question I have, I think part of it may be addressed in the agenda bill, but I just don't recall, can't quite find it. Now, as far as the CIA goes, I mean, I thought that there was a deadline that we had to meet in order, for the shoreline management program. How long is the CIA likely to take? Obviously, you're still trying to narrow the scope for the consultant, and then there's a turnaround time.
We, I actually think we have a fantastic consultant. They've accommodated us by providing draft material for the CIA addendum by, I believe, this June 10, and it will be a part of your council packet for June 18. That is my current intent.
So it's possible to still meet the deadline?
I believe it is. So the Shoreline Management Act requires that we conduct the periodic update to our shoreline master program by June of 2019, which I understand to be June 30 of 2019. We are on track, presuming council provides a little bit of direction tonight and takes action on June 18 to meet that obligation.
So I had a question about the 60 versus 40. So understand that, understand the purpose of it. But what immediately came to mind is materials. So, you know, we sort of had the standard grid decking on Mercer Island. What I worried about is that, is if I have to move to 60, is that, are those materials that are readily available?
Yeah. So I should expand on the exhibit four document just a little bit, and by way of answering your question, councilmember. So in your packet materials tonight, you saw exhibit four, and just to acknowledge, exhibit four did contain a typo, which is really the correction in my first bullet labeled correction, italicized text. The 40% versus 60% light transmittal through the decking surface, the Department of Fish and Wildlife also has jurisdiction over your shoreline. When we are looking at repair of decking, their recommendation is to provide 60% light transmittal through the decking surfacing and no less than 40%. So you may wonder, why is 60% in the draft code? The thought, when we were drafting the code, and by way of explanation, this is still evolving, was that 60% is the Department of Fish and Wildlife's recommendation, and this would provide us a little bit more of a compelling argument with the Department of Ecology to justify not narrowing the dock, but just increasing the degree of light transmittal through. Since I prepared your exhibit four, I've been informed that actually, the 60% light transmittance through the deck surfacing, even the Department of Fish and Wildlife is beginning to back off that requirement because there's structurally not enough material to make that decking sound. So one of my questions for the city council tonight would be, talk through this a little bit with the city's consultant in the background. Again, I apologize, this is not in your packet material. It was relayed to me this morning. Your consultant is, or the city's consultant is really suggesting that we can actually look at a number of different options. So increasing light transmittance up to 60% might be one option. Another option might be increasing the amount of planting in that nearshore area, maybe five feet back from the shoreline edge, which is not currently required for this kind of thing, but would provide additional habitat. Another option would be removing skirting, if there was skirting placed around the exterior perimeter of the dock. These would be alternatives that we could include instead of the 60% light transmittal. There is one last aspect that I've asked our consultant to look into, anticipating that this might be part of the city council discussion tonight, which is that requirement to have the dock a foot and a half above the lake edge. That's not addressed in your exhibit four. I did see, of course, the public comment, and I thought this was reasonably likely to be an item that the council would like to explore as part of your discussions tonight and on June 18. So I've asked our consultant to look into that change as part of their cumulative impact analysis addendum. What I don't know is what that addendum will say.
So just, I'm trying to understand exhibit four. And is it correct, then, that I, subsection I, is just intended to include pilings? Or is there a definition of structural elements that I should be looking at somewhere?
Structural elements will vary from dock to dock. So structural elements on a dock would include, and I heard the public comment a moment ago, I'm happy to speak to that if you'd like, but structural elements in general would include things other than the decking that are the structural components of a dock, which sounds like a complicated answer, so let me expand. It would include things like the piles. It would include the cross members that run from pile to pile to support the dock structure, if you will. The joists that often run out into the lake that the decking is typically nailed to, cross bracing, things of that nature. The current way that this is administered, and the gentleman who spoke earlier is certainly correct, we could be more precise in how we describe this. I think you still want to leave it a little bit open, and I'll explain why.
Deb, Deb, did, um, did Deb send us a letter?
I have two letters. They're probably that I can use. It's gonna keep me up to date.
Could I see that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think it's working.
Councilmember Andrew, I apologize, I lost my train, so I'm gonna repeat probably just a touch. The current way we administer the 50% structural component to dock repair is we literally count the number of structural members, and if more than 50% of them are replaced or reconstructed, that triggers that threshold. So on a typical dock, you might have, say, 10 piles, however many cross pieces between the piles, however many structural elements. We total up that count. If more than 50% are altered, that is the threshold we use. We do not currently use a volume threshold.
All right. And so subsection I, then, is specifically not decking?
It is specifically not decking.
Okay. And then J covers, well, it says structures exterior surface including decking, so that suggests to me that if there's something other than, or in addition to decking there, so what's that?
The most common version of that would be the skirting that you see around docks, and it's relatively rare at this point on Lake Washington.
Okay. And that's just by, kind of by square footage?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it is. Pardon me, I should.
Okay. And so J, Arabic numeral one, I'm hearing already that maybe the 60% isn't really the way to go?
The current threshold, or the current requirement, you can see right above that on line 12 of exhibit four, which is 40%.
Yeah.
Which is where I started. I pushed it up to 60% again, based on that Department of Fish and Wildlife guidance and trying to make the best case for Ecology. I am thinking, based on the conversation with our consultant, that instead of saying 60%, we would want to have some other kind of option, such as shoreline plantings, removing skirting on the dock, or increasing the light transmittance to 60%. Would you like me to speak a little bit more to light transmittance through the dock?
In a minute, I would like to address that member of the public's question, but let me get, kind of, just kind of continue on with this. I mean, how much does this new language even potentially amended down the, or how much does this decouple the replacement requirements, the way we've been talking about in the last meeting? I mean, and I get it that there's a conversation about, we don't care as much if we replace the structure, we don't care if that's not decoupled from the decking, but we really care about having, replacing the decking not trigger structural replacement. How far does this go to do that?
I don't think I can quantitatively answer that question. Qualitatively, it is an area that I've certainly heard feedback from the community about, i.e. that the decking also triggers this other set of requirements, replacing more than 50% of the decking. So I can tell you anecdotally, it has certainly come onto my radar in past permit conversations, that cumulative impact analysis addendum that I referred to, that our consultant is preparing, we'll try and quantify this a little bit further. In terms of decoupling it entirely, I guess the other way of approaching that question, this is the current standard in your shoreline master program. One option that I mentioned on May 21, I don't know if it makes sense here, would be to continue forward with the set of ordinances that you see in your packet material tonight and have this specific issue explored more thoroughly with your planning commission. If you were, for example, to entirely omit or remove this section of regulation from your shoreline master program now, I would have concerns that we would not have our shoreline master program adopted by the Department of Ecology, and that creates some administrative challenges, which I can explain further if you, if you're so interested.
And, I'm sorry, just do get to the light transmittance at some point, doesn't have to be right now.
Yeah, we'll circle back on that.
So I have a quick comment and then a question. So I guess with respect to the 60% proposal, I know that you're providing a chance to walk back on that. I would just say that I'm opposed to the 60% simply because the public hasn't had a chance to weigh in on it, and planning commission didn't have a chance to weigh in on it. The comment, the question I have is actually going to go back to this, the 60, I'm sorry, the 50% of the structures, structural elements, and how you count that. Now, you explained that you counted by the actual number. So we've had public comment, letters regarding do it by area, do it by volume, and you've asked that, you prefer to keep it flexible, not to be too rigid and prescriptive in the language. I guess, has the city always administered it, interpreted it in terms of number, accounting the way you mentioned? And what do other jurisdictions do? Is there, do they do it differently in terms of trying to figure out when you meet this 50% threshold?
To your first question, I couldn't speak prior to my tenure here at the city of Mercer Island, which was June of 2016. Since June of 2016, I believe we've administered it by and large consistently. The language in the section that we're referring to is somewhat unclear as to when it's triggered, which was part of our original amendment, which is why I say somewhat inconsistently. I think we've had one or two where we didn't administer it quite right. As far as pure jurisdictions, again, this is really outside of the scope of where we explored the set of amendments with the planning commission, so I could not speak to that beyond what's in your, your public comment.
Do you, as a follow-up, do you have any personal knowledge how other jurisdictions may interpret?
I don't directly. My hesitation on volume would be that a common approach to replacing piles or repairing piles that are beginning to fail is to cut off the portion of the pile that is above the, essentially the wave action on the lake, because that area is regularly exposed to oxygen, it begins to rot faster, and we sleeve the pile. Pardon me, a homeowner sleeves the pile, meaning they attach essentially a plastic sleeve to the outside of the pile and either put a concrete piece or a wooden piece above and attach the dock to that sleeve. A volume standard would pick up all of the pile, presumably from the lake bed to the top, which means, as applied, your threshold would decrease. Fewer docks would be required to come into compliance. And as applied, that is picked up as part of your CIA analysis and would be something Department of Ecology would express concern about, or I would anticipate so.
So what is the next step if the CIA, we want to go a little bit further? So my interest is incentivizing decking replacement without putting too much of a burden on the structural replacement. So from our public comment earlier, from all the emails we've gotten this week, I understand the integrity of the dock structure is often better than the decking, because the decking falls in disrepair sooner, faster, needs more replacement. I think property owners can figure out how to meet the 40 or 60% light transparency threshold, whatever that is. So my interest is incentivizing and encouraging homeowners to replace their decking without too much risk of having to raise their dock, shrink their dock, basically start over, right? So, so are we getting there with this? Or if we don't, how complicated is the next step to make sure we can get to that hopeful outcome?
So I think we are getting there with this to some degree. I don't think we're going to address every public comment that I've seen to the city council to date. Where I think we can likely go is decoupling the decking replacement with the narrowing requirement, reducing the width of the dock in that first 30 feet. I'm happy to explore decoupling the decking replacement from the height requirement, the foot and a half clearance above the lake as well. The further I go down this path, the more likely we are to run into problems with Department of Ecology saying no. So I think I can do the first, I can try and do the second. If you ask me to do a third, and a fourth, and a fifth, I may just run out of tolerance.
So follow-up. So as we get to that, do we have to be clear on the definitions around the structure, whether it's replacing the whole pile or doing that sort of fix on the top six inches? Or, like, if we start, how far down this rabbit hole do we go before we get stuck?
I certainly heard the public comment tonight, and I'm not disputing that we could be more precise in our code, but I'm not sure that I've heard a concern with how we've been applying that section of regulation to date. And maybe that's because I just clarified it in front of the city council, and we'll hear it next. And maybe that's because I just clarified it in front of the City Council, and we'll hear it next. I wouldn't necessarily go there, because I haven't seen a whole lot of public comment, and it is outside of the comment that I heard in front of the planning commission when we had the public hearing. So to me, there is a procedural component here. The Perkins Coie letter and the public comment that came in at the public hearing was, in my mind, primarily focused around the width of the dock, the clearance above, and the light transmittance, which is why I'm suggesting that's where we focus our effort.
Thanks. Well, thanks Evan for this, this is very helpful. I think I find myself in agreement with Benson that I think the 60% is not where we want to go, and with Wendy, that we want to incentivize, you know, beneficial deck replacement without really financially penalizing the residents who want to make a net improvement in the overall health of the lakebed. So I'd like to definitely go down that road.
So clearly we have pivoted to making decisions. Evan, if you could, if you could just kind of guide us through this, how do you want to, how do you want to approach this, so you leave with what you need?
So, thank you, councilmember. I should have been more prepared for that question, give me one moment. I think the first question is, I am assuming that the City Council does intend to take action on June 18th, which would keep us in compliance with the Shoreline Master, pardon me, Shoreline Management Act. The second question I would have is, I've understood the council desires to decouple dock decking repair from the dock with requirement. I'm already incorporating that into your draft language. The question, I could use some guidance around council, is whether or not we also want to decouple, if we can make the argument for it, the height requirement above, the foot and a half clearance above the lake's surface from the decking repair. And if I saw consensus around that, I would send our consultant to try and argue that out.
Okay, council?
May I ask a question?
So, simple, but I think of, I'll call him Joyce, I'm not sure whether that was the cross-members, I guess, where we go from pile to pile. They're at a height today, and if I'm gonna just replace my decking, changing the height forces me into changing the structural elements, does it not?
It can, yeah. Which would be the logical reason to explore not pushing people into that.
So, I mean, my inclination not to jump too far would be to set aside this structural piece, focus on the decking, put it at 40%, and say, and discard the height requirement as a way to get to something that feels like it was most close to a minimal change, or successfully accomplishing what owners want and getting them some relief there, without going in... But, now I feel a little bit like I'm babbling, but if I could, I want to direct you to expand a little bit on what the CIA addendum development looks like. And are we looking at a process that is somebody sitting down at a computer and doing a little bit of spreadsheet work? Or are we looking at a study that takes weeks? And I have no idea what that is, can you help us understand?
Sure.
How that works?
So the cumulative impact analysis that you did in 2012 with your shoreline master program likely took weeks, and it involved a whole bunch of data gathered at that time, which would have looked at all of your protection mechanisms on the lake. The addendum that I've requested from our consultant is really trying to simply update that original document as it relates to the specifics of the change that we're describing tonight. So I expect our consultant to review our permit data from 2015, when your current SMP took effect, until now, to evaluate essentially the effect of the current standard, and then provide some likely qualitative comments around whether or not they expect any change in the overall cumulative impact analysis as a result of this kind of narrowly crafted change to the substance. That last piece is likely going to be qualitative, because it becomes very complicated to prove it out in a quantitative way. If we were going through a more thorough discussion on the substance of our shoreline master program, you'd see me push much harder to remand this back to planning commission and engage in a more robust CIA document. Here, my sense from ecology is that we can use a very narrowly crafted addendum. So I do expect, our consultant is already working on it. We had sufficient money left in the consultant contract for your critical areas update to cover the two items I've described so far, which is narrowing the dock, pardon me, decoupling the narrowed dock requirement, and exploring whether or not we could also decouple the height limit from the decking replacement. Going beyond that, it likely turns into more consultant time, which will push us over budget on our consultant contract.
Okay. So, that motion is going to be a challenge. So I have two motions, and one is to adopt what's written, and one is to adopt what's not written. And clearly, we're somewhere in the middle.
So, may I suggest as an alternative, I've... Actually, I take credit for this, this is Robin's work, I should not take credit for it. What I'd like for this evening, if I may, is I've inferred nods from the City Council, decoupling the decking from the dock narrowing requirement, and from the height requirement above the lake edge, which is what I would put into your corrected Exhibit 4 as referenced on the screen here tonight. So I think your first motion on the screen, which is essentially very slightly modified from the agenda bill, would still work, Deputy Mayor. And if there's additional direction that I've missed, I would love to hear it.
I guess I have one question about that. When we say "as corrected", does that mean... Well, as corrected, how? I mean, I understand, based on the discussion tonight, you probably understand what direction council wants to go. So if that's the case, I could probably be comfortable with that. I don't know if it's specific enough.
So I have on the screen the corrected language I actually also emailed to the City Council, I believe, yesterday in response to Mr. Thomas's letter, which is a correction to Exhibit 4. There was some language there that was inadvertently garbled when I put it together. And then, we already had in that current draft, your current Exhibit 4, repair of the decking does not require narrowing the dock. I've understood the City Council also wants us to explore, and again, correct me if I'm mistaken, also wants to explore that height requirement, the foot and a half above the lake level. I did hear council comment that I should not continue to pursue the 60% standard, but we might have, and I'm looking for confirmation here, additional mitigation required instead of the 60%, such as the nearshore planting.
So let's, Dave, go ahead.
So, I don't know that we, I don't know that I heard the support for the additional mitigation. I mean, I think at the basis, maybe I'll try and pull this up a little bit. It feels like what we're trying to accomplish is, you've got a bunch of dock owners that are trying to do the right thing, and don't, you know, when they do the dock repair, I think they're happy to comply with the transparent decking, but then we begin to, you know, begins to be a bit of a Rubik's Cube when I start to work on my dock, I don't have a dock. But if I did, it becomes a Rubik's Cube, I get one side of it fixed, and the other side sort of come apart on me. So I think they're, folks are trying to do what is compliant with ecology, but allows them to update an older dock in a way that's a little bit common sense. And so, to me, it feels like if ecology is good with the 40%, then we leave that possibility of moving to 60% as maybe a negotiating tactic if they push back on us. And then, like, the decoupling, I think that we seem to be trying to get to, and stop me if I'm way off here, but that we seem to be getting to is, if you have more than 50% of the structure, I think everybody gets that. That triggers a whole bunch of things to happen. But if you're just redecking, you're just redecking with a more transparent material. Is that what you guys are feeling like? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks. Do I win a prize?
So, if I could, I'll go the next step in terms of my suggested alternative language. So I'm looking at this page 79 of the packet. And what I suggest we do is eliminate I and just take J, which is the decking, not the structural piece. And within J, eliminate 2, the height requirement. And within 1, use 40% rather than 60%. So that's, that would be my suggested way of fixing the decking problem and not entering into the structural question. Does that, let me just ask, does that make sense, Evan, to you? That it's, because what I'm trying to do is be quite close to what you said ecology would accept.
So I would retain I because it's our existing standard, and eliminating it would raise a big red flag, I think, for ecology.
Okay, then, so I'm sorry then, because I'm then misreading or misunderstanding this. I was taking I as the structural elements piece, and then J as the decking piece.
And to decouple it, you need to separate the two. Currently, they're combined into one body of text, which is why I've pulled it, I've attempted to pull it out of I and create a new section, J, to address just decking repair.
I see. Okay, so I'm sorry then, that I'm... So what I was trying to do is leave the structural piece as it exists today and allow this additional exception for the decking.
And I understand that, councilmember. May I offer one last comment, and then I'll pipe down?
Well, no, do more than that, because you just need to save me from my, yeah, my crash that I'm on right now.
So I understand where I think you're trying to go, and perhaps that's the way to get council moving. Eliminating the 40%, or pardon me, returning to the 40% threshold, and eliminating that foot and a half requirement, so the deletion of Section 2. What I would like a little bit of flexibility around is if our consultant comes back and says, "Hey, the cumulative impact analysis won't support that change without affecting our net ecological protection of the lake", I think you may want to preserve some flexibility for us to propose mitigation, such as the nearshore planting, or removing the deck skirting, or increasing the light transmittance.
He's allowing us some flexibility.
I understand, and if I could though, I do, and this actually sort of gave me a little bit of, and I say this jokingly, PTSD, because it's not really, but if you go and read through Table E, which I will find my way to here, on page 53 of our agenda bill, what you'll find there is the outcome of the machinations of, it was many months of debate between the city and DOE around how we allowed people to keep wider docks, because docks were very much at the center of their concern. And options A, B, and C were different mitigation measures that the public could take. And you took either 1 of A, or 2 of B, or 3 of C in an effort to retain that dock width. So where you're going, to me, hearkens me back to this very quickly. And what I wouldn't want to have us do is sort of a very cursory kind of simplified version of this that then somehow conflicted with this and created just a sort of mess. And so, if we're going to go down that path of mitigation measures, I'd want us to start here, which took an awful lot of effort to get put together, and not do some other version of mitigation measures. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, begin here if that's where we're going to go.
Okay.
One councilmember suggested...
So, my understanding is Evan is taking this table and then giving us some added flexibility, given the more stringent rules coming into play with this update. So I think you need Table E plus these optional mitigations so that you can mitigate kind of grandfathering in old dock widths and heights with replacing the decking. So you get Table E, and you get some optional mitigation to be able to avoid having to go up another foot and a half or come back down to four feet wide. So this is, this is not an or, it's an and.
So what I thought I heard is that, based on the analysis that comes back, the mitigation that you are contemplating will be calibrated to basically requirements, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You're not just dreaming up things, mitigation things, right? This is, we're going to do... So if I had to, if I had to say, where's my head on this? I don't want to add disincentives to try to do the right thing. But what you're saying is, based on the analysis, you'll put the right amount of mitigation in, and no more.
That would be my intent, I guess. The reason I say it that way is I do believe the Department of Ecology likely looks at this whole discussion differently than the way it's being characterized at the moment. So I realize the council is providing direction, and I would not include more mitigation than is necessary, as best I can determine, to address ecology's concerns. And I believe Councilmember Wyker was correct in her summary a moment ago. This is in addition to likely those items in the table, so that we don't have to require the foot and a half height.
Okay, does somebody want to try and make a motion here?
I move that we incorporate the language in Exhibit 4 as corrected into ordinance number 19C-06, and set ordinance numbers 19C-05, 19C-06, and 19C-07 for third reading and adoption on June 18th, 2019. And thank you, Evan, for going back to ecology to make this all work.
Second, as long as our clerk has a pretty good idea what "as corrected" means.
Fortunately, Evan takes really good shorthand.
Okay. May I just ask, because I, forgive me, I'm still just not quite understanding this. There are these two pieces, a 50% structural and a 50% decking. I misread this in thinking one paragraph is one, one paragraph was the other. I suggested just do the decking, not do the structural. I'm not quite sure where we end up with the language "as proposed". Can you, the motion maker, or you help me understand what's proposed, what's moved?
Or do you want to just break those two items up into two separate motions? Or is that, I don't know?
May I attempt to provide some clarification and then get out of the way? So Exhibit 4, lines 4 through 18. Recall, you have an existing standard at the moment. So lines 4 through 18, remove the 50% decking from the structural requirements. So lines 4 through 18 would apply to more than 50% repair of the structural elements of the dock. And again, the language as presented in Exhibit 4 is slightly garbled, I apologize for that. But it is your existing shoreline master program with some edits to it. The edits are largely non-substantive. Lines 19 through 25 have been where we focused most of our conversation. And I believe, to Councilmember Bassett's earlier comment, we're returning the 60% light transmittance to 40%. We're attempting to remove subsection 2, and we may have some additional mitigation based on our consultant's recommendation, if necessary, to address ecology's concerns.
Thank you, yes, so I'm in support of the motion.
If that's what the motion means, I am too.
No further questions, comments? Are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I make one?
I'm fine.
Go ahead.
Just one...
Normally, we don't allow this, Benson.
Oh, sorry.
We voted.
Okay, no, no, I'm good with a vote. Just when it comes back for the third reading, is it possible to actually have a red-line draft from the very original to one that captures all of the changes? Because right now, the way, like, for instance, what we had in the agenda bill... Because right now, the way, like, for instance, what we had in the agenda bill captures some, but you can't tell where it came from. You know, for instance, some of the comments that were made by Councilmember Bassett on the 21st, I think were captured, but you can't, they're not highlighted. So I like to see a highlighted version of all changes made by everybody from the beginning to what is, is being proposed as a third version.
We, we would.
We're going to need a second on that.
Well, it's just a comment for staff. I know, I know, I know.
Evan?
I know, but you got the gavel, so I'm just a little nervous.
Yeah, go ahead first.
In, in flouting order, just as Benson has, I'm going to do it as well. I just realized, I had also made a note to myself, I'm at line 20 of, of the alternative language. And you use the term exterior surface there. And that left me scratching my head a little bit because it says exterior surface, including decking. But I could imagine exterior surface could include the sides of the joists? That, that is exterior surface, it's just not top surface. So I, I, I would just want to make sure that you have a definition of that that is unequivocal and that you could explain to us and that wouldn't have us all getting, realizing that we'd gone down a different path than we thought we'd gone down.
So I, I can describe to you how we administer it, if that would help clarify. So it, it certainly includes the decking, as noted in the, in the regulation. It also includes any skirting that's attached to the perimeter of the dock. What it typically wouldn't include is the other thing, the structural elements, because that is addressed separately. So if you had decking that was simply nailed to the top of the joist, we would treat, treat it as one or the other, not both, in administering it.
Maybe the language should include, exclude structural elements.
Sure.
Yeah, just a point of clarification.
Hey, pardon me, council member, I, I agreed and, and had a thought, so may I just expand a little bit? When we start chasing structural elements and what a structural element is, you can, you can rapidly begin making distinctions that aren't really that different. Some people will argue that the decking is actually a structural component of the dock in that it provides rigidity for the dock structure itself. So I'm happy to take a look at it. I, I think actually as administered, it's, it's a fairly straightforward item.
Very good. We all clear and move on? Good.
Deputy Mayor, just for the record, I, I realize that you voted, but there wasn't a formal end to that. So I just want to clarify for the record that all six council members did vote in the affirmative for the motion.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5570, thrift shop staffing transition plan phase three. Welcome Youth and Family Services Director Cindy Goodwin.
Yeah, you're right, thank you. Good evening, members of the council. I'm here to address Agenda Bill 5570, asking you to appropriate $76,878,000, $100 to the final stage of transitioning thrift shop part-time staff and work-study to a more secure staffing model of regular full-time staff. This agenda bill would, this money would allow us to upgrade two positions that are currently .75 to one, one full-time staff and include the addition of two additional staff members, one in donations and one in apparel. And I believe all of you saw the thrift shop and the apparel as the upstairs position that gets things out to the floor. This, this is the third stage of moving staff to this type of funding to where, so that their shops' revenues don't fluctuate with the up and down of work-study students and part-time, part-time staff members. There were two, past agenda bills doing the first stage and the second stage, and this is really the last one. We've asked for these funds. We'll monitor the revenues that we expect to receive. We've estimated that the net revenues will be approximately $60,000 each year for, of this biennium this year and the next, next, next year. We'll evaluate that and then come back in December, letting you know our progress. And asking if this works well, then we will ask for another appropriation for 2020. I think that's it for now. I know that a lot of you went, were on the tours. I spoke about this movement toward paid staff at the April 30th council meeting. And this really represents a lot of what we alluded to, that we're moving toward a pattern that we can really count on revenues being stable and consistent. Would that, like to, any questions or anything more that I can go in?
Benson? Oh, Lisa?
Oh, thanks, Cindy. Not a question, I just wanted to thank you really for the tour of the thrift shop, seeing behind the scenes. Even though I've worked in retail and I, you can kind of, there's nothing really hidden in the thrift shop, but seeing, actually walking behind the scenes, it is quite a feat to process all that volume. And with the really great volunteers that you have, evaluating some of the special items like jewelry and art. And I'm more impressed than ever with the operation.
I'm glad to hear that. That goes to Suzanne Fleetham. I just want to thank her, our coordinator.
Anyone else?
I don't have my math in front of me, but the, the thing I was going to ask you is, is in the agenda bill, you show a, I'll try and do it from memory. You show a graph of the expenditures, perfect, thank you, Bruce Bassett, expenditures. And so I'm lacking a little precision on the numbers, but if I look at it and I say I spent $650,000 in, in 2015, that's when we began, you began that process, right?
Yes.
All right, so if I spend $600, is that right?
Yep, just a little over.
Okay, so $600,000 there. And then by the end, I'm up toward 800K in expenses, but my delta in income is only going up sort of 300K. And so the, the math that I was trying to get to, that I, I struggled with a little bit on the chart, is do you have a, an, either run it by net profit or gross margin, either one, where you, for each conversion to a full-time employee, what that converts to in, in dollars?
We, what we do, yes. So Suzanne calculates using, she looks at what we, what the, all the goods are there, how, what additional revenue we bring in, and then she, she does that. She figures out the net, what would the cost be, and then subtract that, so we do do that.
Okay, but I guess my question is, is more around the, the benefit that I get from converting to, because a full-time employee to me is like, is, is like a pretty high bar. It's somebody that we're, is with us for the duration, right? It's not, it's not sort of seasonal labor that it can kind of come and go. So, you know, we, we end up getting an employee and they stay there. So my question is, it feels like we're spending $200,000 more in order to only realize a $50,000, $250,000 gain. So my incremental is not that great.
That's right. So as we go up, that's right. And we're hoping that, we're thinking of this as where we are right now, but we're thinking that this is going to allow us to take us to the next level of really bringing in more of a net revenue. So, so when we calculate it just as it is, that's really making sure that we have everything plugged. And from there, we will see what other, what other parts of the thrift shop and things can we move around to increase revenues. But that's true, the margins do get, as you add on staff, the net that you, is getting smaller now, but we're hoping that that will change.
But, but I guess that's my, my question, like, it, we're, it's, it's not demonstrating that over the years. We're, for the incremental investment, we're not realizing, you know, an appropriate, you know, some one X or two X or 10 X gain. And it feels, it feels tough to me, particularly in our economic climate, to take money out of reserves to do it.
Yeah. A couple of things about that. The thrift shop pays for its expenses, so it comes from, comes from the thrift shop. But I think what you're seeing here too is that, at least in past, in the past couple of years, we're still dealing with a lot of fluctuations in revenues because of our staffing pattern. We still go down when our staff goes down, and we take Suzanne and Logan and put them at cashiering. So we aren't stable and we aren't really fully realizing our growth. And I think that our estimates are based on what we've seen in the past. So we're hoping that the margin will be better. But yeah, I, I think, I think if I understand you correctly, you're right. As we add on, we're getting less of a, a larger jump, that's true. At least that's what it looks like right now. I think I was going to say one more thing about that. I think also if we're not realizing enough of a net, it's a business. It's not like our programs, that you really do then start to play with staffing and what's ideal for you to have. Do you have too much staffing? It doesn't make more sense to shift the model. I think it's probably, for us, I think we would look at this as a business different than program staff.
Yeah, I understand. So I'm, I'm probably not in support of it until we get like a little more precision about what that net, what the multiplier for moving to a full-time staff off of, off of seasonal would be.
Suzanne, do you want to add anything to that as far as anything?
I've talked.
There's only six talks.
May I ask perhaps a leading question here? I mean, is it not the case that it's a bit of an apples to oranges situation because you're also dealing with an environment in which your volunteerism has, has dropped over time? And so you are obliged to shift to a more paid-for labor force rather than volunteer labor force? And so to compare these as if it was just the same would probably be a bit of a mistake?
Yeah, we're doing this out of necessity. We don't have enough people now to cover what we need to get done. And, and we're, we're losing revenue on certain days. So yes, that's exactly it. We're, we're, we're losing not just volunteers, that we have more doing, doing fewer hours. We're also just fighting the, the low level of unemployment right now. And so we're losing people of part-time, and we keep having to replace them. So it's costing us a lot of money in staff time. So we're trying to plug a hole. I hope that that net and that margin becomes higher. That's what we think it's going to be, because we think then we can really beef up the advertising and really do things that will really start to grow us in a, in a, in a different way exponentially. Is there anything else that you want to add to that?
Yeah, I, I would add that part of this is adding a donation attendant. Right now, we have one 40-hour person out at the front handling donations and 200 and some cars coming in per day. So that's a lot of volume for one person to handle. And we also have a lot of opportunity in terms of excess revenue, which we're selling in bulk to the Seattle Goodwill. So, you know, without those support staff to distribute those donations, we're, we're not opportu, we're not optimizing our revenues. So they're definitely needed in place.
Benson?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I, I think Councilmember Wiesenteyer makes a good point, but I, this is only a, in essence, a six-month pilot. I mean, and then it's going to be reassessed. So if your concerns, again, legitimate, are realized, and hopefully they're not, then obviously it sounds like YFS is ready to take another look and perhaps readjust the, the FTEs. On the other hand, if their projections are correct, and hopefully they grow the revenue, then it'll pay for itself. So I, I see this as, as a good investment. You know, it's a trial, it's an experiment, but I think it has a lot of upside. And so I, I'm hopeful that it will be, it will work. I, one question I do have, because Cindy, you, you mentioned this thing about the hiring and the unemployment rate is, do you anticipate a problem not only hiring these new FTEs, but retaining them? I don't know what the pay scale is or, you know, how that's going to work. But, you know, obviously having turnover is, is a problem, so.
I think we're finding more people leaving for, for jobs with their, with their benefits. That's what we're losing people to, and that they can count on something full-time. And that's where a lot of our turnovers come. We lose people after a few years, just like anybody does when they're in the next step. But at a regular full-time position, we're not having that challenge there.
Dave?
Benson, you may have swayed me over. What is the, what's the difference in total cost between, and I'm not, I'm not going to use the right term, I'm going to say seasonal worker, that, no, that's a utilities term, but a seasonal worker versus an FTE? So, because we see the bulk of the dollars moving out.
Yeah, yeah. So I can't give the exact wage, but what I can say is this is how I figured out. It, the, the hourly wage might be fairly comparable, but you have to add on when you put a full-time position in about another 30% for benefits. So that's, that's what we're adding on, full-time with benefits.
Lisa?
Yeah, I, so I'm kind of sympathetic to where Dave is, but also where Benson is. I mean, I see that we've got the actual revenue numbers. So from, say, 2015, when you had $1,003,000, to 2018, when you had $1,747,000. And I just did that math, and that's a $400,000 increase in revenues. I, I don't know, I can't tell, because of the expenses line, doesn't have numbers on it, whether there was a concurrent $400,000 increase in expense. It actually doesn't look like it was that much to me. But, you know, given that it is a short-term, kind of reversible sort of a, a decision, I think you have the, I think you deserve the opportunity to at least test the theory of whether it will increase revenues.
I'm ready to make a motion. So I'm, I move to appropriate $76,878 by reallocated budgeted casual labor costs and increasing budgeted thrift shop sales in 2019 to increase two current .75 FTE positions to 1.1 FTE each and to add two new 1.0 FTE positions encompassing a donations attendant and an apparel production assistant beginning June 2019, all of which will be funded.
Good discussion.
Benson, I'm, I'm pretty sure you said 1.1, where it says 1.0.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And so I think you might want to correct that.
Okay. Can you correct that? It's corrected. Good catch.
Okay. Everybody happy with that motion?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
We're going to have discussion.
Well, I thought we had a discussion already. Do you need more discussion?
How do you unwind it after six months? You let two full-time employees go?
No, well, you know, I don't, I think we take a look at where are we? You know, we, we monitor everything, we, all of the throughputs we monitor. So we kind of know, I think Suzanne will be able to figure out, where are we not getting the bang for our buck for those people? Is it, is it, is it getting more donations on the floor? Is it, I think we'd have to take a look at all the pieces and figure out what we, where it should come out of if it's not doing it, and why? Were there other factors that made it such that we didn't hit the net revenue that we, that we thought we would? So I think we'd have to really take a look at all the data we collect and figure that out.
Julie, is this on, like, are we, do we have a date of review in six months for this? Sorry to just put you on the spot.
We do, I spoke with Chip about it today.
Yeah, I was thinking you'd probably do this review part of the third quarter.
Yep, yep, and so we would come back to you at the December 3rd meeting.
I'm just going to ask a quick question. I thought I recall a statement that was made when we talked about this earlier this year, that revenues were up this year in '19. And so, you know, I've been a, I've been a proponent of these types of moves. To me, it's investing in the revenue generating ability of the thrift shop. I'm wondering, are we, can you give us a preview of '19? How are things looking? Because this chart is, it's not really telling that story.
I believe we're on target to achieve the number that we're proposing here. We've made some temporary moves with staffing, which will have, be time-limited. That will expire. Those staff will have to go away if we don't come away with an approval here. And so we are on track to meet those numbers.
So I, I seem to remember revenues were up 14% or something?
Yeah, they are. And what she's saying is that we got approval in, inside to do a temporary full-time for one of these to see if it would do it. So with that person in that position, we're seeing increased revenues. And so that's when we're talking about if that, that person is here for a time limit, and one of these positions would become permanent. But yes, we are, and in fact, I think that we had a certain figure. Do you remember how many thousand we were up this year? We just talked about that the other day. Do you remember? 15?
I don't have one.
Perfect. 15 for the month. We're actually up, she was just saying 15,000 for the month. It's been a very good month. We're having, right now, I think, as we mentioned on the tour, we're having a really big influx of, of items. So we're really turning things over quickly, as quickly as we can. But we are ahead, and I don't know how much we're ahead by the year, just because I don't look at that. I have not looked at that in a couple of months.
So just for my own personal gratification, if you could send me these reports that you guys are running all the time? guys are running all the time, I would love to just have some visibility in what are we looking at? How are we looking at the business?
Yeah, the reports, yes, we can, you know, we'll send you out what we send to Chip when we report our, how are we doing this month, or above and below. We'll send that to the council.
That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Vote it up. So we have a corrected motion, right?
Yep, it's corrected.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Good.
All right. All right. Our third item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5574, interim city manager agreement approval. Welcome Human Resources Chris Siegel. And hey, just before we jump into that, I do want to stop and acknowledge that this is Julie's last meeting. Which, you know, that's a good thing, right?
No.
And so I did want to just take a moment to personally thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. You're a bright, capable leader. Staff obviously have just been, just super happy with you and it's a big loss to see you leave. But I wanted to give council at least an opportunity to kind of chime in and give you their thoughts. So I'll open it up.
Welcome. Julie, I haven't worked with you in very long, but it's been a pleasure and I really wish you all the best. Thank you for your service to the city. We appreciate it. I know it's not an easy job at times, maybe ever, but we appreciate your work and your dedication.
So, boy, day one, I think we put you right into the frying pan and then moved you into the fire from day one to this week. And I just want to say thank you. You stepped in with grace, you stepped in with brains, and you stepped in with bravery because this is a tough town when you're new. You did great work. You led the city. Staff loves and adore you. This community loves and adore you. There are a few folks that might be a little frustrated with some decisions you've made along the way, but you have been a role model for me as a leader and as a woman, and she leads Gov is forever gonna be your hashtag. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything. Your leadership is just remarkable and wherever you go next, they'll be lucky to have you. And I'm so sorry to see you go.
Julie, I'm also sad to see you go. I think you're a true consummate professional and, you know, you've been a great leader and frankly, you provide the city with a lot of stability. Having started my tenure on the council with, I think, three city managers was horrendous. And you brought the stability and leadership that has carried us through some very difficult times. And as Councilmember Wyker says, we put you in the hot seat from day one and perhaps the seat got hotter and hotter. I don't know. But in any event, you've done a great job and again, I wish you the best in your next chapter.
I'll hearken back to the hiring process and that folks will recall, we went through an initial round of trying to find folks that ended in a decision to start over. So there was a wide net that was cast and found us nobody. And a second process found us Julie, and I think we were extremely lucky to have the opportunity to hire her. And I felt that then and have felt that every day ever since. So it's been a pleasure to work with you. It is a shame that you are leaving and it's a shame that the tenor of some in the community is such that it tends to wear us, wear you down. I think it's unfortunate. And, but at the same time, I feel it and know that you feel it. And I think that that, you know, feeling it's part of being good at the job. You know, you have to, you have to not lose the sense of caring, but it's really hard to do that. So I, I am sure you will land in an excellent spot going from here and hopefully it's one that's got a little less vitriol to it and can really use your tremendous talents without quite so much of the other stuff that goes along with that here. So good luck to you and thank you for your service.
Okay, I'll start with what I always say is I think the city is just incredibly lucky to have you and to have had you. And I think you did so much to help the organization as a whole and to help us resolve some almost intractable problems. And I think we were very, very lucky to find you and the work that you did, you know, on week one, inserting yourself into sound transit, which made that just, that impossible task go so much better and have a level of program management and organization where we ended up with a result that frankly, we never would have gotten today. And I think that we're getting to sort of see the fruits of that and your management of that process and the, how are we gonna deal with the parking and the buildings and the coalescence of these builders? I think of all the time that you spend, like, out in the community, talking to people who, you know, have all kinds of different opinions and you, you know, the things that really strike me about you, other than the obvious goodness, is you have this tremendous courage, like, to go out and use the goodness in what you know about your organization and your team. And you're never afraid to front that to anybody and explain not only what your position is or the city's position is, but to listen so carefully. And you're just such a great listener. And I think that speaks to your tremendous leadership and the, and the way that you've pulled together your management team and the whole city staff. And I think we're super lucky to have you. And I, you know, sort of echo Bruce that it's super unfortunate that you have a minority of angry voices in the, in the community that, you know, that it's hurtful. And I think that it's really sad that that happened because I think we will, we will lose someone that we will be unable to replace at your level and your competence and qualification. And so just a thank you and, you know, I wish the, wish the go-forward of the community luck, but I think that you inject that level of vitriol into the conversation and you sort of, you know, you tend to run off the good people. So thank you very much for your tenure and thank you for everything you did for the city. And I think there's some super tangible results that you get to leave behind and I wish we had more of that of you. Peace out.
Yeah, drop the mic. Okay. Thanks for that.
Okay. Yeah. Chapter two. Chris Siegel, HR Director. Good evening, council. So the agenda bill in front of you has the interim city manager agreement attached to it, and it requires council approval to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Jesse Bond has been serving, has been formally serving in the position of acting interim city manager since you authorized that appointment at your May 21 meeting. So with tonight's action, your approval tonight will formally appoint Jesse into the position of interim city manager, dropping the acting portion of the title, until council appoints a permanent city manager. That's it.
Any motions?
Move to authorize the mayor to sign the attached agreement with Jesse Bond for Mercer Island interim city manager effective June 8, 2019.
Second. Go ahead.
I'm obviously in support of this motion, but I think that the city has been incredibly fortunate to have Julie and we're very fortunate to have Jesse come on as the interim. So I just wanted to say that.
Very good.
I know, I know I speak for you, Dave, but not as I would.
Absolutely do. I just would have taken about 3,000 more words to do it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none?
Well, you know, I just, no, I, you know, I'm gonna, I am gonna abuse the system here once again. You know, Benson got me started on it. Julie talked about it very gently after she offered her resignation, that the vitriol was wearing. We've talked about it a little bit up here. Jesse is stepping into that role now. And I think we owe her a debt of gratitude for doing that. But I am gonna specifically ask those in the public who are inclined towards statements of complaint and doubt, please give Jesse a chance to do this job. I mean, I've already seen stuff beating her up. And it is so unfair to bring that to these folks who just want to do a good job for this community. So please, give her a break. Let her try and do the job. Let her try and run this organization that cares only about trying to do the right thing for this island.
So I just want to chime in and say thank you, Jesse, for stepping up. And I also want to thank Ryan for stepping in to backfill the Parks and Rec director position. So I know it's taken a lot of work internally to figure out how to cover things and not drop any balls that are juggling everywhere and that are so critical and so important. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for the rest of the staff who are stepping in to cover and make sure that we can all be successful in the things we need to do and overcome the challenges we need to address and more importantly, keep serving the citizens of this community. So thank you.
Now, I will echo the thanks, Jesse. I'm looking forward to working with you. I do think that the public has a right to speak their mind and whether we like to hear it or not, we should not try to encourage people to not speak their mind. And so I would disagree with Bruce a little bit on that. And I would also say, I don't think Jesse needs a break. I think she needs a chance. So let's give her a chance to do her job.
Very good. Anybody else? No, moving on. Okay. Our final item of regular business is Agenda Bill 5560, 2019 Boards and Commission Appointments. Deb, I see you have a long bullet here that I can read. Do you want me to read this?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Council, each March, the city begins its annual recruitment process for filling positions whose terms are expiring on the city's advisory boards and commissions. This year, the available positions for appointment were Arts Council, two positions, Design Commission, two positions, Park and Rec Commission, seven positions, Planning Commission, two positions. Position vacancies were advertised in the Mersham Reporter, the Mersham Weekly, and on the city website. The application deadline was also announced at four meetings of the city council and emails were sent to current board and commission members encouraging recruitment. In response to outreach efforts, 25 applications and four requests for reappointment were received by the May 3 deadline. All applications were forwarded to the city council for review. There were two positions with no appointments. Design Commission, there was one request for reappointment to the Design Commission and no additional applications were received, leaving one vacancy. Staff will advertise the vacant position once the annual recruitment process concludes. Arts Council, at its January 15 meeting, city council adopted ordinance 19C-01, which reduced the Arts Council membership from 11 to 9. When Ms. Stratton resigned, her position was eliminated, allowing for flexible approach, downsizing through natural attrition. The council's newest commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, is expected to convene for its first meeting in July, on July 11. Council, is there a motion or discussion?
I would move to appoint the mayor and deputy mayor's recommendations for appointments to the city's advisory boards and commissions for positions expiring May 31, 2019, as detailed in Exhibit 1 to Agenda Bill 5560.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say something about it. And I, not controversial, but I just did want to say that I did read each of the applications and I was really impressed by the level of public service shown, particularly the huge interest in the Parks and Rec Commission. We've got great bench strength there. I wish we could have appointed everybody who applied. There were, I think, there were more than double the number of applicants than there were positions available. So I don't think anybody should, I hope nobody feels bad that they didn't get it because it was a tough choice among a lot of qualified and passionate people who want to give their time to the city. So thanks to the public for that.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none? Motion passes? We now move on to other business.
Deputy Mayor, if I could please, I just want to remind council that we are going to go out for advertisement for the Design Commission vacancy as soon as possible. I did send out a draft process to you and Mayor Burtland. The hope is that we can have somebody appointed at the, I think it's the July 16 meeting that we have. Calls for a three-week timeline. If that's too short, then we'll go longer and bring it back to you in August.
Thank you. Moving on to other business. Council, is there a motion to excuse Mayor Burtland?
No.
No, no motions?
No move.
Now, what do we do?
Censure.
Censure.
Did somebody make a motion?
I did.
Bruce?
I'll second it.
First and second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any?
Planning schedule?
Yeah. Planning schedule?
Deputy Mayor, if I could just confirm with the council that next Monday, you are in fact available for an executive session. And to confirm the time that you'd like to commence that, if 6:00 PM, if no one objects to that, we'll plan to publish that or advertise that for 6:00 PM on Monday, June 10. And whether or not I need to have any call-in? Call-in?
Call-in.
Call-in?
And for me, 5:00 would be better, but whatever.
It really is the will of the majority. Just, I know sometimes 6:00 is a little bit better if people are coming from work, but you want to do 5?
5:00, ma'am.
5? Benson?
Fine with, I said, I said, I said anytime.
You're fine.
So that's, that's fine.
Thank you. It's my wedding hour. Great. Yeah.
I had a meeting.
So we'll advertise that for 5:00 PM on June 10 and make sure we set up a conference call, call-in number as well. And then June 18, you have a very big agenda planned, the Aubrey Davis Master Plan concepts will come before you in a study session. You also have a public hearing on the interim small cells design, an update on the proposed commuter parking and mixed-use project MOU, as well as hopefully a, basically another agreement that would terminate the current MOU that you have with MICA. And then, of course, it sounds like, oh, I think we're good on that. So for the 18th, it's pretty packed, so. And then, of course, you have your mid-year planning session that is scheduled for June 21st. And I know the planning schedule says 1 to 8, but I believe we're looking at having that go to 1 till 6. And that way, again, cutting down on some costs on meals and that sort of thing. But it means that you, if you have not already reviewed the draft agenda, provided your comments to Jesse or Ally at this point now, please do that.
When was that sent out?
Would have been, maybe, Ally will send that back out to you.
Yeah, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember reports. You have two minutes.
Puget Sound Regional Council, Bruce and I were there last week for their annual meeting. And of note is that we have 1.8 million people and 1.2 million jobs coming here by 2050. So growth is coming and it's incumbent on us to choose the future. We have not be overwhelmed by it.
The May 22nd Utility Board Meeting.
The May 22 utility board meeting was taken up by a presentation by Recology with some previews of the transition to the new contract, some discussion about public notices that are gonna be mailed out with schedules and instructions for people to better understand the weekly recycling pickup and other things. The folks who presented from Recology were very professional, very well-prepared. I'm hopeful the transition goes smoothly, and I think they're gonna have a local call center, so we should have good resources when people have questions, which they inevitably will.
Benson?
There is a K4C elected summit next Monday. If anyone would care to join me, I'll be there. I'll get you the details if you're interested.
Great, I mean, we're gonna adjourn one minute early. This is gonna be great.
You're on a tight ship.
Okay, the next council meeting will be a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 18. There being no other business to come before the council, the time is now 8:59 PM, and the meeting is adjourned.
I feel you.